Okay. We're convened, this is a work session, to talk about TMDL. Date is February 13th, Monday. And before we get started, let me wish a happy birthday to Councilwoman Crawford, who has joined us here on her birthday. That's dedication, like you know. So it really is. And to come talk about TMDL in addition to that.
If you'd let me know, I'll bake you a cake.
It would have been a birthday Thursday.
And just something for council to mull about and we'll talk about maybe just before the other meeting, but the fireboat is available for a tour by council, which may include a ride. So just start thinking about dates that you may be able to support that. All right, and without further ado.
Okay. Well, I had decided in half an hour ago that I made too many slides for this, so I'm going to try to go through them quickly. What we're talking about tonight is the staff's submittal to DCR with information that will help the state prepare its Phase II watershed implementation plan. This is a staff's submittal instead of something that council approved because this is a work in progress. And we're still finding out information about the program, and therefore it's not anything that really is ready. There's no action plan that's ready for endorsement at this point. The memo that came with your report included a large list of staff members and Graham, who's an elected official obviously, who helped out in this process. In addition, I just wanted to say that because of council involvement and also the city manager's involvement, I think we're, Pecosin is positioned much better than some other localities. Randy was active in the regional steering committee, and I think Pecosin's voice was well represented that way. And I know talking to staff members in other localities that council is probably one of the most involved in learning about this issue, and I think that will help us out. So what is this document? Basically, we were asked last April to provide information to the state in support of this report that they are going to be submitting to the EPA in March, and basically locality-specific information. This is a voluntary submittal, but this is the, our really only one chance to correct data that might be wrong in the model, give better data, and let them know what kind of resource needs we have in order to accomplish this program. The first couple of chapters basically say that we support the state having, running a TMDL program instead of the EPA coming in and implementing backstop measures. We give them some information about the city of Pecosin, general information, including the fact we drained of the Chesapeake Bay instead of the York River. We talk about some of the environmental work the city's done in the past, and we talk about what we have done to get to know more about the TMDL program and specifically to prepare the submittal. Okay, so let's look at what we found out when we delved into the EPA and state numbers. When we did our own land cover assessment, we found out that over 1,200 acres of the area that the EPA considered city-controlled property was actually federally owned. So the EPA gave us 1,200 acres of Plum Tree Island, and we gave it back to them in the submittal. The grassed land cover category was overestimated. That was probably, my best guess is, since they were using satellite images, they may have mistakenly assumed some of our wetlands were actually grasslands. We reclassified that as forested land, which is how the EPA is classifying wetlands at this point. Also, there are no forced harvesting operations, large-scale forest harvesting operations in the city. What we mean by forced harvesting operation is paper mills or lumber companies coming in and clear-cutting large quantities of land for their operations. We're not talking about land clearing associated with development. So we corrected those on the state's VAST program, which is a computer tool we can use to get the data right. Okay, existing treatment practices. Basically, we found that we have provided more treatment than what the state estimated. We have different types of treatment. The state kind of used some overall averages. We have more wet ponds, less dry ponds, less infiltration than what the state assumed. And what I, we also found out is about half the treatment that we've provided over the years in support of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act was constructed before 2006, and about half was done after 2006. Okay, which gets us to the issue of credit for all bay work. I'm going to run through the next couple of slides real fast. Basically, we were told that the bay model would credit past work using water quality sampling that was taken in 2005. However, both EPA and state regulators have acknowledged that the model's flawed when it comes to providing credit to individual counties and cities. That's combined with the fact that if you do some research, you'll find that the data doesn't really reflect Pecosin's on-the-ground realities. So the conclusion is there really isn't any reasonable assurance that Pecosin was credited for that actual work. The state may have been credited for the work, you know, as a whole, because the bay is cleaner than it was in 1985, but there really isn't a good tool to divide it up to individual cities and counties based on what they've actually done. And one of the things in our submittal is a request that the state develop a way to give us that credit. Okay, quickly, this, before September, we were basically told that the model was good enough to give us credit, and then in September 28th, the state's position and a lot of other states' positions kind of advanced, and they decided that the model was not appropriate for measuring reduction progress or giving credit to local governments. And then the state responded that they agree that there are limitations to the model at a finer scale. Okay, Pecosin represents approximately 1/4,000 of the entire bay watershed. If you take out Plum Tree Island, we represent a little bit more than 1/7,000 of the bay watershed. So I would say we're, we would probably exemplify a finer scale. Further research shows that what was input from Pecosin's land use and other data doesn't really match what's on the ground. And when you look at water, where water quality samples were taken, they were taken in rivers, near the, where, near those rivers, empty into the bay, halfway between Pecosin and Hampton, and halfway between Pecosin and York County. Therefore, those water quality samples contain runoff from Pecosin, Plum Tree Island, Hampton, York County, Langley Air Force Base, runoff coming down the bay from Baltimore, Maryland, and then water being carried up into the bay by the tide. It's likely that the amount of water from Pecosin in that sample is a statistically insignificant amount. Now we get to the preferred BMP scenario. One of the things that the state requested that localities provide is pretty much a 14-year plan with very specific numbers that said we would like to see, that say, these are the treatment measures we will use, this is how many acres those treatment measures will treat, and this is how we're going to pay for it. Keep in mind that this is a voluntary submittal. This is not a requirement by the state. What we basically found, and if you go through submittals from other Virginia localities throughout the state, the basic, the bottom line is there was too much data requested, there was too little time to provide it, and there were too many unanswered questions. If you read the, what resource needs we have, a lot of them are questions. How will this be treated in the model? Will this regulatory framework change? How are we going to pay for this? That sort of stuff. So we did not provide specific, you know, we're going to treat X amount of acres with wet ponds, and this much is assumed to be impervious area, and we're going to pay for it this way. What is provided in this document is the state scenarios, the state strategy spreadsheet. And what that document is, is just general strategies. We're going to look at doing this. In order to do that, we need these things. And that is, was also submitted to the state in a Word file, and they're actually copying all those and pasting them, and then modifying them for their reports. So they are using that data. Also provided is a regional scenario. The scenario was developed by Hampton Roads Planning District Commission with varying amounts of input from different local governments. What it represents is possibly what could be in the ground by 2025 region-wide. It is not broken down into individual cities and counties, and it is not meant to be prorated down into individual cities and counties. So if they say that you're using 15% wet ponds region-wide, that doesn't mean each locality will have 15% wet ponds. This is just one possible region-wide scenario. This was not approved by local governing boards. In addition, few, if any, of the local government staffs actually were able to identify or take or make a reasonable guesstimate at what their localities could afford to do versus what they would need outside funding to do. And also keep in mind with this, regional priorities differ from local priorities. James City County is very different from Pecosin, and Pecosin is very different from Newport News and Virginia Beach. Different cities and counties expressed different priorities. So the staff did a good job, made a good best-guess estimate, but it does, it's not a substitute for what we have for our own resource needs. Okay, while this submittal is voluntary, remember the program is mandatory. These requirements are published in the Federal Register. Also, remember, this is a moving target. The paper a few months back said that according to the latest EPA model run, James City County had effectively met the goal. However, there's going to be more computer runs. There's going to be more information. If the EPA deems that the bay is not improving quality, the water quality isn't improving enough, or if for some reason the model spits out something different as information is corrected, the requirements could change as time goes on. That's one of the provisions of this rule. Okay, so needed resources. Funding, money, the ability to obtain money, relief from the artificial 2025 deadline because that is requiring a lot of money in a short amount of time, and state and federal financing. One thing that I really hope they, the state and the federal government will consider is that this program is not occurring in a vacuum. We have other mandates coming down from the state. The state is delegating duties, for example, the state's stormwater program. We're going to start managing state stormwater permits in a few years as a result of the new stormwater regulations. Localities are facing cutbacks. The economy is not good. And one of the things I see as I go to various meetings on various topics is it doesn't seem that everybody's really thinking about the combined impact of all these issues. And I really hope they do. Something else to start thinking about is the role of other organizations. This program is six state, stateswide, 6,400 square miles, 64,000 square miles, anyway. There are a lot of people involved. This program was initiated by environmental groups suing the state and the states and the federal government. Right now, we have pro-agricultural and pro-development groups suing to stop this program. Lot of interest from outside organizations, and they play a role. What I hope they do is continue, the environmental groups continue to do a really good job on a regional basis with some of their education programs. They're doing some great workshops for citizens on private property retrofits, rain barrels, oyster aquaculture, that sort of thing. In addition, one thing that local governments really need is clear guidelines and rules from the state. If the rules are vague, what happens is we start having a lot of conflict on the local level between pro-development and pro-environmental groups, and you have property owners and local governments kind of caught in the middle trying to decipher nuances in these state guidelines and regs. And one thing that all sides of the, of this issue can work together on is finding common ground. Everybody can agree that redeveloping waterfront property that currently has no stormwater treatment is a good thing if water quality is improved through that redevelopment. If the state can work with these different lobbies to come up with clear guidelines, I think the bay would get cleaned up faster. The other thing that's interesting about this program is the role of regional organizations. Information has been disseminated through regional planning organizations. Letters go directly to them. States don't, or local governments don't always get a copy of them. The reason they did this is because this program is on such a short timeline, it was the most effective way to communicate, and we benefit greatly from belonging to a regional organization. However, there is a line in there kind of reminding them that ultimately it's up to individual cities and counties to speak for themselves. Other needed resources. Better regulations, new way of looking at environmental rules. We kind of need a new, it would be a good idea to go back through the regulations and make sure they work within the new paradigm that we're working in. More knowledge and options. Coastal area issues aren't always recognized by people who aren't familiar with how tidal water works. We need more treatment options that are actually cost-effective in coastal areas. A reasonable schedule. If the program is long enough, then private property redevelopment will occur. It's, at this point, we, local cities and counties may find themselves having to do more of the retrofits because that redevelopment doesn't have an opportunity to happen privately-financed. State and bay-wide educational programs. There's, everybody's in the same boat. Everybody wants to, or has to do the same thing, so perhaps we can see more wide-scale educational information for people. And finally, large-scale state and federal projects. It is more cost-effective to do larger projects. There's work that can be done offshore in state and federal waters. So I'm hoping we see the state and federal governments fund work that is either on their properties or in their waters. Okay, what's next? We have submitted, everybody submitted these, this information to the state. The states are frantically coming up with their Phase II plans. They will be submitted in March. So this spring, the EPA will review these plans and decide whether to use the state plans or implement backstops. Next summer, supposedly the EPA is going to rerun the Chesapeake Bay model. So we'll have more income and, or more information and updated requirements coming out next summer after that model runs occurred. And meanwhile, local governments should begin specific projects. However, keep in mind that the amount of work depends on whether the BMPs we've submitted, the treatment measures we've submitted in, to the state are accepted, how much they're credited, what the new model says. Track everything. This program requires an incredible amount of data collection. Basically, we have been tracking best management practices, but we haven't been tracking quite as much data as we had to input into the model. So we had to go back through all the files, get more information. So I'm going to try to get everybody tracking a bit more information upfront, so it's not such a big job to go back through the files. Finally, the state's stormwater regulations. They're listed by the state as one of the measures that will be used to meet the bay TMDL requirements. We need to develop a state stormwater, or we need to develop a local stormwater plan and have it approved by the state water control board in 2013. So we need to start working on that fairly soon. Okay, and that's basically it. And also, if I could add another thing, is I'm doing some other engineering other than the TMDL for a few weeks, so.
Very good.
Do some catch-up.
Let me share, Ellen, that this is a fabulous report. I've read most of it. I want to read through it again because there's a lot of information in there. You've done a great job putting this together. Any questions of council to Ellen as we sit here this evening?
Well, I would like to have some idea, what kind of projects do you think would be required to meet the standards at least there now, or what will be coming? What kind of things would be expected to do?
Okay, just a little bit, a little bit of general information. What I'm going to do is as soon as we find out what is accepted by the state, and there's at least one treatment measure that's considered interim, and I want to find out what the final pollutant removal efficiencies are that are assigned to that one, we'll figure out what areas we need, what type of pollutant, pollution we really need to treat. And we may target what type of things we do based on that. But in terms of smaller projects, we're going to start with public, publicly-owned property, public works yard, perhaps the schools. What are some quick retrofits that we can do and get a lot of credit for the least amount of money? Right now, since the Public Works building, we had the fire in the trailer, and we're replacing a building, it might be a good time to look there. In addition, we're also going to look at what we own and what we control that might be an easy way to get a lot of credit for retrofits. Much more expensive project, but something that would get us a great deal of credit involves the Oxford Run ditch. We widened that one time. We own that. We have a tremendous amount of already-developed area draining there. So what we can do is if we do some more work in that area, we could possibly provide not only water quality treatment, but provide more flood control. And that is an area, at least on this side, the city hall side of the ditch, where we don't have a lot of electrical cables and sewer pipelines. So that may be an area that has a lot of potential. But that obviously would be a larger-scale project and be more expensive. There is stuff like installing rain barrels or rain gardens, providing information to residents about that sort of treatment. Since we already have nutrient management plans or don't apply fertilizers to city-owned property, we've probably done that on public property as much as we can, but maybe we can encourage citizens to rethink fertilizer use.
How would you, how would you capture that, though?
That's a good question, and that's one of the things, if you read through the regional thing, we don't know yet.
Right.
Actually, can I speak to that? I was going to mention it at council directives at the end of the meeting. I received an email this week, I can tell you who it is later, from some environmental group, and it was exactly that survey asking privately, private landowners, what have you done, what are the best management practices, have you, you know, do you use fertilizer? And it was asking some data that I thought, this is, these are good questions, this would be good information to know. So I would encourage you to, I think the survey's up until the 16th.
Okay.
But I would suggest you contact them and get what data they, and they, I did tell them I was from Pecosin when I took the survey. So stuff like that, I think would be helpful to track the information, and perhaps we could design. It's pretty easy to design a survey nowadays online for nothing and just have, make it available to people who are willing to say, this is what we've done.
Right. And I know the Wetlands Watch, Wetlands Watch is working with HRPDC to come up with ways to document private treatment practices, and also the state and the federal governments are looking at ways to capture that information also. So the survey sounds like a fantastic way of doing it, and hopefully the state would buy into that.
Right now, it's on the, if anybody's on Facebook, it's on the, there's an informal Pecosin group, it's not the city's Facebook page, but a Pecosin webpage, and it's somewhere near the top because I posted the link, so.
Good.
Has the state indicated that they're going to respond to all of these? Because this whole thing is kind of a series of questions, the way I read it.
It basically tells them that, you know, the way I read the report, just like you, the first time through, is that the data is completely in question.
Yes.
Which is no secret. I mean, I think we've, we've sent a letter both to the state early on.
Right.
And to the DEQ, telling them that their data is in question for what they're applying to within the city of Pecosin. But I think what, where I'm at on this whole thing, and I applaud your efforts to try and do things, you know, like Oxford Run drainage area. If that's going to help us control flooding, and on the backside of that benefit, we're going to get TMDL, certainly I want to continue down the path of projects like that. But I would say from, you know, what's, you know, when we sit here and we go, what's the next step? In my mind, the next step is, Ellen's done a fabulous job, the one person with a small group of people that have helped her feed the information up to the state who has thousands of people, and up to the EPA who has 17,000 people, of what the small city of Pecosin can do. And no doubt that we will do our fair share as we have since the 1990s. But I would say that as far as additional resources being applied, you know, budgets and the like, that we stay at the minimal funding number until we get some more answers. Because I am not going to, at least from my personal standpoint, I don't think that the bang for the buck is going to come from the city of Pecosin in cleaning up the bay. And we are an environmentally, we are good environmental stewards of the bay, and I would ask you, if there was one fact, factoid that I could get out of this, it would be, how much have we spent pre-2005 to today? And a lot of it is, you know, that the developers actually spent it, but it was spent within the city of Pecosin, so that the city of Pecosin by default has spent it. How much has been spent on the ground?
I was going to actually try to capture that number, but between time and just, it's all been, the cost data, I have to go back and look historically, is not in the same form as the data I have. That doesn't sound right, but that is, would be a very large task to do. We can make some real rough guesstimates, but it wouldn't be really.
I think I'm, I'm not trying to get you down to, we know this is the number. But if I said plus or minus, you know, if we go to a government bid and it's a Class F estimate, it's plus or minus 40%, what's the plus or minus 40% number?
I'd have to go back. What I can tell you today is that one of the things we did quantify is the cost, or the value of the land that is in the RPA. And what we did, that's somewhere in this report, I'm trying to remember. Basically, we, I estimated the amount of RPA because we don't have that clearly defined on a GIS layer. And then I used the, Graham keeps the historic value of land. And I went back and took the value of, the average value of land in the city in 1991 when that RPA was established and came up with a number, and that is in here. And then what I did is I looked at, I took a current value for waterfront and non-waterfront land and made some estimates for current value in there.
This would also include sewer improvements since 1990?
Well, we did also put information about, we put information about components of things, basically city finance stuff. We valued the land, and then I also put in how much we have spent on the sewer. And I believe, I'd need to double-check the number, that what we have spent, we still owe, I think, $6 million.
$6.4 million.
On the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And then in addition, we've spent almost $1 million, like $900,000 on the consent order work.
And that's all I'm asking. And like I said, I'm not looking for something that's a tremendous amount of effort or staff time. I guess what I'm really asking is, can we for half a day go down there and sit there and just try and come up with a list and the approximate cost of each? I think that's as good as the, or better than the document that we got from the estimating. I mean, if they left their federal lands in here, and that was basically a fifth, I'd say that we're within the ballpark. I'd just like to have a number that we can refer to when we talk to federal legislators or we talk to state legislators about what dollars we have spent cleaning the bay. We need to have a dollar figure with it.
Okay. And also, in terms of how this information is, is being used by the state, how And also, in terms of how this information is being used by the state, how it's getting to people. Remember, this is a city staff to state staff submittal. It was not sent to the Secretary of Natural Resources. I tried to write this in a way that if you felt there was some information that may be useful to bring, to talk about, I tried to organize it in a way where you could pull out sections. But this is only going to staff members at the state level. And what they're going to do is they're going to take the state spreadsheet, they're going to incorporate all the spreadsheets that were done by local governments and put that in one section of their report. They're going to take the information that was submitted by VAST for each locality and they are going to try to come up with a statewide data file to be input into the Chesapeake Bay model. It will not be broken down by region or by, it won't be broken down by local government. So, it'll all be lumped together. And actually, everything that will be submitted will be kind of lumped together and sent to the EPA on a statewide level. And then they will review the resource needs and maybe use some of that to develop new strategies and some of it they may just list as resource needs. I'm not quite sure how they'll use that. We had two hard and fast data inputs that they had asked for, the spreadsheet and the VAST, the computer data that was submitted. The text is a supplement that almost every local government is submitting to the state in addition to those two pieces of ways to give data to the state, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. It's very accessible.
Excellent job, Ellen. Excellent.
One of the things that caught my eye in the report was the list of the five sources of water pollution. And when you look at them, we have very little impact on any of them. For example, wastewater treatment plant, well, sure, we participate, but discharge, so that's obviously HRSD. Agriculture runoff, we don't have agriculture per se of any degree in town. Stormwater runoff, yeah, that's, that would be us. On-site wastewater, septic systems, and I think you said we have like two dozen septic tanks still in use.
We're still estimating the actual number, but.
We're 100% sewered as a city. We could make that jump if we had to.
99. something. What I did for this report is I assume 95% just to be conservative until we get the actual number, so.
And the other one is atmospheric disposition, air pollution. We don't have any industry that's doing major pollution. Automobiles would be our only source, and I think you said the possibility of inspection of exhaust.
Well, I don't know what they would do.
Coming for everybody.
Yeah, I don't know what they would do, but that is one way Maryland got into that issue. When I lived in there in the 80s, I had to go to a, something that looked like a gas station and they had to check how much emission was coming out of my car.
Keep that in Northern Virginia.
Right. Have it in Northern Virginia. Now, the problem, you're right, we only are really, our biggest source is really urban stormwater, but in Virginia, they think that urban stormwater is the area that needs to have the most attention paid to it from the EPA standpoint. And that is the major cost category that's talked about in the state senate finance report.
If that was the case, and while I agree that that's what we're being told, if that was the case and a simple federal law to change the input of fertilizers would take care of this issue across the board, they're unwilling to do that. So, I don't want to treat something here that there's an alternate plan for in the fertilizer industry across the nation. So, I just want to make sure that they get that word loud and clear. This same federal order that was passed to the city of Pecosin could have been a federal mandate to change the inputs to fertilizer and accomplish the same task.
And I'm also curious to see what happens when, I was amazed at how much we had done in the early years for the requirements. The requirements have slowly been building over time. And I was wondering where we'd be if the areas west of I-95 had been incorporating, had been having RPAs and some of the requirements we've been doing all this time.
Right. And that's why I need that figure because, you know, I think the city of Pecosin will do more to protect the bay. I know that our ordinances and stuff are set up in a way to do that today, that every development is, has a BMP requirement or urban stormwater runoff requirement. I would tell you, many of the older neighborhoods have the earth and ditches and the things that could be improved that are probably treating a tremendous amount of this already. But at the end of the day, I want it to be equal. I don't want the people of Pecosin to have paid to be the filter bed for what occurs in Franklin County. Or take any county west of 95 that feeds into the rivers and, you know, we can't filter that amount of water. So. All right? Anything else? Yes? I guess we'll adjourn until the council meeting. Thanks.